I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Mr. Colbank, Mr. President, Mike Dunham here, Paul Dunham here, Mrs. Franks here, Mr. Howard here, Ms. Krupa here, Ms. Mosher here, Mr. Buruski here, Ms. Wayne here, all present.
Thank you. When we move on to public forum, is there anyone who would like to speak this evening?
Thank you.
Please welcome to the stage the president.
Hi, my name is Justin Colby, I live in Smithville.
Hi.
First thanks to the board and to Mr. Peg for now that we have the YouTube channel and the presentation of John Monday for the restructuring plan was on the website. So everybody here would have had a chance to review the video and the restructuring plan for its next meeting. So the main thing to discuss in the restructuring plan was the closing of Smithville. My gathering from that was the problem that's being addressed by closing Smithville is because of budget shortfall and the current enrollment. Something that was mentioned was the current population issue, the unemployment. That needs to be addressed before we're going to address the other two. But funding a school is one addressing the first point. I think it had personally impacted the other two points. It does not make the district more attractive for people to want to move here to keep schools open and to get the revenue that the district needs. Now the stated upsides were the reduced cost and the renewable cost would be between $600,000 and $1 million. It sounds like a fair amount, but it's less than 2% of the current budget. And here in that range, it's probably realistic to be between 1% and 1.5% of the current budget. So put in that perspective, it's not a very good proportion of what the district currently is. I think there are a lot more potential downsides to closing schools. The first is one, arguments for consolidating schools is increased opportunity. You can have more core software and things like that. That doesn't apply here. It's going to result pure opportunity. Most of the savings is personnel, so cutting conditions. So the prosperity and probability eventually future. That's one less principal who is in charge of the school. So a lot of the special opportunities that are running at what we see in the district too is we have fewer bands, fewer sports teams. That's one less student council that the fifth graders won't be... Those are opportunities that are gone if we close the school. The other is that Smithville is one of the most consistently popular schools in the district and that makes it more attractive. And we're seeing that, as mentioned, there are 51 students who attend Smithville who don't live in tennis areas. And I'm pretty sure that part of that is because one, the performance, and one is the community atmosphere. At the Trump or Tree a couple of weeks ago, there were almost 300 people who attended this act. In the holiday, there were probably more people. So people like that atmosphere and to close that sign, it's 200 people. The other is that there's wide evidence that there are negative outcomes from students having transitioned schools. So in the case of kids who went to the first swing in kindergarten, in their elementary years, they were able to... Between elementary and middle school, they were able to free transition. Now it's been mentioned many times, the effects of transient population, issues with performance, mental health, all that stuff had huge impacts. And then personally, I moved when I was second grade in very difficult transition. This is going to be for some kids to be in closing on them at least twice. Kids who went to the first swing went to Smithville and will have to go to another school. The others may have an impact on you. A lot of people I know, this applies to me, and I've heard other kids say that the reason why they went to Smithville is because they have a nice school. The year that I moved to Smithville was the year that they won the Blue River School Award in their Savannah, right at the school on Lenny Street. And that was the first thing I saw when I was going to look at my house. And it definitely impacted my decision. The other is that there hasn't been any other options. The only thing, because there's been two plans presented so far, are only including closing schools. There should be... It should be considered an option to increase taxes. And in the presentation Monday, there were three tax increases in the last four years. And when you look at the increases, they do not keep up with the budget increases. So we're consistently going in the hole. Nobody likes the sound of the tax increase, I know. But the thing that bothers me is that we only pay about 25% of our bill in local revenue. It's been stated a few times that we need to look to our state representatives. When you only pay a quarter percent, I think it's a bit insulting to our legislature to complain that it's not right. The other is that there are other ways to incorporate municipalities. If you look at the top of the schools, especially in Southwest Pennsylvania, they are incorporated differently. They're homegrown municipalities, which basically means they make their own charters and they don't necessarily go by the state rules of incorporation. Now, I don't know if that's the way it works for us. But what it says for those municipalities is they take ownership of their schools. They take ownership of their communities and they have to rely on the state for the federal government to fund their communities and their schools. So in closing, the parents and residents of Smithville were willing to add more to keep the schools open. They know a lot of people. When petitions were voted out to keep the school open, people were offering donations to fix the... to fix more of the... We think it's worth observing. Closing the school only gives a test, a 2%, if I did say it. And it's not a good deal for people in Smithville, it's not a good deal for the parents. Because of how size of Smithville and the seven institutions in it. I don't think it's a good deal for the public housing.
My name is Kate Vigeria, I live at 44 Bubba Road, Lanning Town. I'm a senior and senior at Albert Galveston. I attended Smithville Elementary along with many others in the room. My mother has taught at Smithville for the past 18 years. Everyone knows that Smithville provides a rigorous curriculum that produces positive results. They have been nationally recognized as a Blue River School several times. Smithville was recognized as ceremony in Washington DC where my mom and Mrs. Jordan were intended to receive the annual award. Tonight, I am here to talk to you about what happened behind the scenes in Smithville. Every one of the Smithville teachers, staff members, and my fellow classmates have impacted and influenced my life. They have taught me respect, manners, dedication, values, and perseverance. Hershey Kisses for Miss Russell always helped too. I learned that it's okay to express myself, to become cool with who I am, and be confident to feel powerful. I learned all of this because the adults there took time to have conversations with me. They learned about my interests, strengths, weaknesses, and accomplishments and advantages. Many of them even attended outside events of the school. Many of them even attended events outside of school day. Came to watch games, musicals, and games excitable, attended birthday parties, graduation parties, and celebrated big moments in the lives of any child that asked them to attend. This is not uncommon for them to do this, no matter who you are. They make even every one of us feel important and special. To this day, I still remain in touch with many Smithville teachers and feel highly for any help or advice. Every single faculty member in that building was and still is listed as second family to every one of the kids who went through the school. They pushed me and every student there to be the best version of ourselves. Some of the brightest and most well-grounded kids at Albert Galveston in Smithville. When you look at the students involved in sports, bands, theater, and puzzle high school, the majority aren't attending Smithville Elementary. None of these experiences and connections could have been made without the close-in relationships that they would offer. With my mother being a teacher, I understand how this is called to be effectively teaching class of 20 to 25, let alone a class of 35 or more, which would be the new numbers that Smithville closes. Added to that, how will these teachers continue to get individual attention to each student? How will they rely, really get to know the students they are teaching? How do you expect a single teacher to provide a friendly environment, demonstrate basic life lessons, and teach curriculum while trying to maintain 35-plus kids? I would like all of you to show up in that situation and tell me how to do this. Everyone needs to understand how crucial the elementary years are to a successful student. Lastly, I transferred to private school during my eighth grade year. Not only was I successful, but I exceeded expectations at my age school. I attribute my success to the ways Smithville brought me up and prepared me to be the shaman and mentor son I have to be in my new school. Teachers at that school constantly commented on my work ethic, manners, and foundation I had, which was a direct result of my elementary education. I transferred back to Albert Galveston for my senior year. After being away for four years, I observed the students that are still well-known involved in the environment academically at the high school. The majority of those students went through Smithville Elementary. My last comment would be this: As before, it is your job to make decisions that are the best interest of the students in the area. Closing the schools that exceeds academic expectations, upholds values, supports individualism, prepares each child to be productive, and involves citizens in and out of classrooms is not an extreme decision to make. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heidi Wong, I'm here in Masontown. I please make sure that the public student concerns and perspectives, as I feel as not adequately representative of the ambition. I would like to acknowledge the people we have, the students that attend Albert Galveston area school district, whether that be in our elementary, junior high, or senior high right here. As a junior at Albert Galveston High School, I watched the seven and a half hours of my leave day spending in this building observing the dynamics and how operations stand. I think it is fair to say that there are things that need to change. Our problem has existed long before Smithville was a school. And one before any kind of school was created. In fact, I believe our problems in this district always make the same place in case we are lost at one point in the world. Why is people about that much in one of the best schools in our district that is so tragically overlooked is beyond my understanding of what defines the priority. Our lack of acknowledgement and consistency is far beyond ability and much further than a root and way harder than any one else in this room. The possibility of Smithville Elementary closing does not impact me directly, as I will be graduating next year, but it does drastically impact the lives of so many students that do not yet have the ability to come up here and speak as I do. I remember attending a meeting at elementary, as I'm sure most of you remember your kind of elementary school. And I ask you, knowing what you do now, would you not want some of these people to be asked? This board in front of me and the people that make it up, I do it without a doubt beside a passion and a willingness to honor my nation. I have shallow understanding to what your lives and career are like, but in the same there as I respect you, I, along with everyone else in here, know there are other options than denying more children the opportunity for education. In my time spent here, I have seen you creative, innovative, and a source of solutions to troubles in our district should look more important than us. I cannot see anything of greater importance in the staff and students at Smithville Elementary and the role of secure job placement and education. These decisions you make, these concepts you fight for, they only affect one group of people that you must look to when everything is set up. And that group of people is us, your families, your students, and your staff. So I ask, make sure the decisions made from this point consider more than the financial burden, or rather, move the decisions to remain for the first place. Our students are children, they are futures, they are yours, and I believe it is time to be much better for them. To my fellow students, I ask you few noise. These injustices defined so commonly in our district and all across the world are often questioned for unselfishness, taking comfort in routine and security ourselves. Rather than favor the wedding of our favorite home parts, we whisper our tweets in white walls and get expect last in the form. As students, we look for blame on our secures within the idea of tyranny. We put it back to... We should only go as far as to win the election. We must stand as a type of our posterity and that includes students at Smithville Elementary. These children are more than just a class member or a test work. They are potential brokers, lawyers, artists, politicians, engineers, construction workers, architects, farmers, teachers, and anything they would like to be. Let us help them here, let us be their voice. After all, they will be caring for us many days when you leave now. Please help put in our schools, lead the town by the effort.
Is the mic fixed?
I'm gonna look at it when they break for the exec session.
Alright, my name is Ben Mark, I reside at 131 Romano Road, Masontown. I'm here at the scene, being as both educator and parent. Yes, I'm one of the 51 or so families that choose for my children to attend Smithville Elementary. I can't keep this decision because my children, now nine and seven, attended preschool in Smithville and it was an easy transition. Not to mention, I wanted them to have my lifelong friend, Mr. Mankin, as their kindergarten teacher. However, I did not realize the impact my decision would have on my children's lives at the time. I had epiphany when I began teaching at the high school four years ago. Now, before I begin, it's not my intention to belittle any other school or teacher in this district, as I am a product of two former AG teachers and also give credit to many former and current teachers who I either had in school or those who mentored me or continue to mentor me right now. I like to consider myself an AG success story, as we often don't hear enough praise of our graduates. I have worked with many fine teachers in several buildings in this district and can wholeheartedly say we have amazing people in all buildings. With that said, when I began teaching English in our high school, I started to take notice of a certain caliber of student. They weren't necessarily the smartest or the most talented, but what they did possessed with an edge, something distinguished them. These students were created, molded from a unique culture. These students possessed work ethic, manners, they were well-rounded. Not that I didn't see these qualities in other students, but I often found the common denominator was that these students had attended Smithville Elementary. While I had no scientific data on this, as a teacher, it's my job to know children. I can only attribute what I've observed to the culture of Smithville Elementary and the community of Smithville. When I chose Smithville for my own children, I had no idea of the impact I was making on them, the impact the school was making on them, shaping them to citizens I could be proud of, not only as a parent, but as an educator in the Albert Galveston area school district. So I am asking you to truly consider the culture, who may be dismantling by closing this building, is so much more than just a building. Is it truly something we can afford to lose? And then I just had another question. My son would be directly affected if fifth grade goes to middle school. As I said, it's my job to know children. Fifth graders need recess. I still believe sixth graders need recess. Is that something that's going to be addressed if they do indeed move to middle school? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Kendall, and I live at 3520 Mortantown Road, Smithville, PA. I'm a parent of a child at Smithville Elementary School in fifth grade. I'm a major teacher at Smithville in French Hill Elementary School. When I attended the work session in October, I heard Sam Roberts, a local representative with the Garland Company Incorporated, speak about our district-wide plan for the maintenance of our school's roofs. He mentioned that he looked at the roof on Smithville School in 2018 and that the district decided to quote "hold off on the repair of Smithville's roof." This past October, he suggested a complete replacement of Smithville's roof. He stated that the roof would cost between $765,000 to $825,000, the variable gain in the cost of labor. This proposed project involves the removal and disposal of two layers of roofing material, as well as the removal and the disposal of the polystyrene insulation. The job would take all summer and would begin in the spring before the school year was complete. I am so thankful for the board's willingness to investigate options, thinking outside of the box, to find a solution to this problem. I would like everyone here to consider a few ideas. Idea number one: Constructing a trussed metal roof over the existing roof at Smithville Elementary. This solution would not involve any demolition or disposal of the existing roof, saving a significant amount of money on labor and disposal. Project time would be much faster, allowing for no disruption of the school year. This project would require a structural engineer and a drawing and approval. By having one or two of these alongside of my father, I would suggest that is an option well worth looking into. Some of you may be concerned about the existing mechanicals on the roof and other items such as plumbing vents, etc. I'm happy to answer any of those questions you may have about that. Idea number two: Our school received a phone call today from Melinda Corrigan. She was our former PTO president for several years, and her three children attended Smithville Elementary School. Her husband Mark works for Carlisle Construction Materials. He also used to work with my father. They also own Carlisle, also owns Hunter Panels, who manufactures the poly-iso insulation that Sam Roberts wants to replace our insulation with. It just so happens that Carlisle manufactured the roofing material that has been on Smithville Elementary since 1996. She said, Melinda, said that Carlisle and Hunter performed trials on their materials and are interested in possibly donating to the cause. This is very promising and should be a clear sign... There should be a clear sign how motivated the community is and that they are willing to do whatever it takes to help our school and to keep it open. And I have Mark's email address, mark.corrigan@carlisleccm.com. I can give that to you again. Just as I was sitting in the audience, I received an email from Mark. It says, "Hello Jeremy? We may be looking for a test roof and would like to help any way I can." And yes, the membrane was manufactured by our company. "The best I can do is follow up with my manager first thing in the morning to see how to proceed. I'll need to know the thickness and compressive strength as in 20 PSI. Hope this helps." Mark. Now, I realize that this is a long shot, but it's worth the shot.
Hello, again. Rachel Burns, 452 Lumber Works Road, Lanning Town. And I'm here on behalf of, as I said, my school-run, all of the children of Albert Galveston School District. Touching with Mr. Roberts with Garland Company being here, it stated that the board needed to act upon the roof replacement within the next few months to secure the lowest bid along with the materials at the potential lowest rate. Now, as a colleague meeting, Mrs. Krupa made a motion to amend the agenda to add a line item to move forward with planning and specifications for roof replacement at Smithville School. The motion was seconded, and then discussion was had about not knowing what the final cost would be, and comments about we need to have the information to make a vote. I'm asking you what information you need to move forward? Why can't the board move forward with planning and specifications? Why can't we? Why can't the board advertise for bids? I personally feel this is the least of work to do after the money was spent for the Garland Company to make such recommendations regarding the roof. It's the least that the board can do in a attempt to keep Smithville open. Now, Mrs. Krupa's motion failed by a vote of five to four. And on Monday, Mr. Peg presented a very well-repared PowerPoint showing how a restructure can be achieved, one that we were told the board knew nothing about. It seems that a lot of time and attention has been made to hushing rumors and preparing for presentations. I'd like to ask how much time has been devoted to securing rates, obtaining money owed to the school district from the county, or donations to this replacement of the Smithville roof? I've also recently been told that the PTO is a nonprofit, which means if companies donate directly to the PTO, it can be written off for tax purposes. Now, tonight is the last meeting for Mr. Dunham, Mrs. Wayne, and Mr. Colbank. And I'm asking the board personally tonight that someone make a motion to amend the agenda to add a line item to move forward with the planning and specification of the roof replacement at Smithville School. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to secretarial, enter into executive session if you need it.
Madam President, there is a need to enter into executive session for personnel. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all for coming out again as you did Monday evening. It's great to hear such great compliments about our school in Smithville. We do have a wonderful staff, principals, support staff there, great parents. And that does echo throughout our district with our elementaries. We have a lot of wonderful principals and teachers throughout the district. I don't want any of the other schools to feel that they're inferior to Smithville. I think we have a great school district. I think all of our schools do a wonderful job, and I feel fortunate to be able to work in our district, with our community, with our teachers. So there are tough decisions to be made, and myself, my administration, and this board will make every effort to do what we feel is best for the entire district. So I do want to thank you. It says a lot for your concern, for your child, for your district, and I do appreciate you being here this evening. So I want to thank you again. At this time, there is a need for executive session for personnel.
...
Second.
All those in favor, close the conference. An executive session was held on Monday, November 18, 2019, from 7:57 PM to 9:12 PM for personnel and student confidentiality. C. Adopt agenda as presented.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to put a line item on where we solicit bids for the repair of Smithville Elementary School roof.
I would like to make that motion for hours, second. Excuse me. Can I... I'd say I'd go first. Okay, I would like to make an amendment to that motion, that we direct the administration and the maintenance department to seek multiple alternatives for the necessary repairs to the broken boiler at Smithville Elementary and to return those to the board as soon as possible.
One second. Wait, wait, hold on. Your motion is very different from the motion that is already seconded. Okay? So what you're doing is requesting to amend a motion to virtually replace me. Are you saying go ahead with the bidding and in the meantime get alternatives?
I'm... No. What I want, I want the board to direct the administration in conjunction with the maintenance department to, as we've been asked, to think out of the box, to look at multiple... to look at multiple alternatives. Okay, Mr. Kendall brought up what I feel, and I'm still a new expert, something that is definitely worthwhile examining. To seek bids for the roof replacement, for example, when Mr. Kendall or someone else out there may have something that's outside the box that would not be included in that bid.
I'll do a meeting later, sometime. If Garland went out for bid, the specs that gentleman was going to do was going to be remove the entire roof and put a, put a build-up roof, am I correct?
Different from what I understand completely from what Mr. Kendall.
Yeah, yes, that's my point. You see, when you go out for bid, you have to go out with written specifications. And I don't know what, is he specifying the roof that's going to run roughly $750,000?
I think he's going to, and I may be wrong on this, but I think he's going to, to deal with specifications that deals with his area of roofing that may not include out of the box.
My, I agree with Mr., and if there's a way that we can draft specifications, and I'm sure we can do it in the alternative, that we can get both.
You're going to need somebody to do that.
And so, so the specifications for what Mr., the representative of Mr. Corrigan from Garland Company was talking about replacing the flat roof, can we not direct him to draw up specifications for the flat roof repair replacement as well as a pitched roof that does the things that Mr. Kendall was discussing?
I don't think this company does that. This company just sells, Garland just sells this part.
And how convenient that that was the only option that he would give us. Yeah, I would amend my motion that if possible to solicit bids for a pitched roof for Smithfield.
I think you're probably meaning a metal roof. A pitched roof is like this, am I right, sir?
Well, fishing is like, it's still being a slim roof.
Yeah.
I think what they're hoping for is to not limit the bid specifications so tightly that we're limited to one certain type.
Yes, yeah, I would, yeah. I would just learn everything that's available out there instead of hope with blind.
I can try to have a couple of different companies, the Garland Company, as well as the representatives of other companies with different kind of roofs to come to the December meeting for, you know, questions, answers, thoughts that they would, you know, could put on Smithfield. I know one, one thing that is, because we're talking about putting a roof over top of what's there. One thing I know that was a concern before is the number of leaks we've had in the last year. Water was in there, insulation of it was wet. There's a concern if you have, there'll do a bolt that could form in there. So, that's a concern if you encapsulate that when the roof is, it's going to create a different problem later if you didn't remove quite insulation and replace that course of roof. I've bought a roofer, a body stretch, I've been on a couple, but I would suggest letting me have a couple of different representatives from different companies with different products come and address the board in December in a couple of weeks.
But that wouldn't be an issue if it was done when it was supposed to be repaired two times over, correct?
Well, the roof.
When the money was there.
Roofing plan that we have had, it was due to be replaced in 2019 to 2021. We're in 2019 right now. That was the plan that was given for our district, the maintenance plan for the district in 2016. It said Smithfield's roof would need replacement in three to five years.
But if it was having problems then, wouldn't it have been a smart thing to fix the problems before it got to this point?
Madam President, would you please make a, make note because there is a time for public forum during our meetings?
And, can we decide on this amendment?
Yeah, can I just say something to you?
Oh, my God.
Because I know, I'm not a decision maker, but I will tell you, you know, we represent a lot of public school districts. There are individuals out there who only consult on roofs, who you may want to ask one of those kind of people to come as well because they have no stake or in particular manufacturer. They can give you an idea of what other roofs' systems are available. I mean, there are, there aren't one or two out there. It's not a pitched roof, a metal roof, or it's a build-up. There's, there's a lot of options that exist now that you may want to get guidance from somebody who will write the specs for you once you decide which kind of roof you think will work based on this person's recommendations. And yes, some of those kind of individuals will go out for multiple systems because that's what you want them to do.
Do we need to have a motion to direct the administration to do that?
I, you don't need as long, you, probably you'd be best to do a motion. It's, I just think you need advice on how to go with this considering your financial conditions and what you can do.
Okay, so, would Mr. Kendall's person come also see my question?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking he would.
Yeah, I'll touch base with Mr. Kendall. We'll have our conversation.
And you know, I've been in the network for 35 years or more. I mean, I've covered many of flat roofs with sheeting, steel roofs, put them on, you need a couple of masons, put some buildings up, a couple of columns, run some ventilators, sheeting roof. There's ways to take the water out and scrub them. It can be done of way too much pressure.
Okay, so.
And we'd like to ask what some plans are with the building also. I got here late, I followed up, I didn't hear anybody say what the plan over the building is to slow it down.
It's just, it's just in discussions that, that's, you know, at the workshop, this repaid, had a presentation, and he explained the timelines and everything, and it's just being discussed.
Well, you know, you got people willing to donate their time and their experience and their.
I understand, I understand.
And to cut the cost, the cost probably isn't the issue then.
I understand, but I just had this, this woman here not talk to on the public forum, which Mr. is right, there's time for public forum. So, are we going to go ahead?
Yes, I will, based on that conversation, I will withdraw my original motion and make a motion to the Director of Administration to seek any candidates who is interested in providing proposals for the roof as well as getting any potential roofing manufacturers. Okay, manufacturers and consultants who will give a proposal in December.
Okay, I, there's a, seconded. Do I, I don't think we do, I don't think we do what we need to do.
Well, it's all those in favor of amending the agenda.
All those who think of amending the agenda, opposed, got motion carries. Now, here's the number.
That motion will be added as the administrative. Okay? So, that comes up, you will not vote, you will not have to vote on it. I understand that there's also a motion that's going to be made to amend the personnel portion of our agenda to add an item M. And just so the board is clear, if this becomes a motion to amend the agenda, that amendment would be transfer Mr. Jared Plisco to the position of Special Ed Director pursuant to the Administrative Compensation Plan, and that would be effective in the. You need a motion to amend the agenda for that purpose in a second.
Motion.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and I'm opposed because there are, this motion is just for the amendment. We have two new board members that want to be taken in their seats in two weeks. I think this is an extremely high, extremely important position who is going to handle a substantial amount of the budget to be responsible for that. And a minimum which should be opening up to other qualified people in the district. I, in my personal opinion, think that it should be advertised, and I am voting no on that in that reason.
So, you're saying people won't sit on board aisles, not qualified?
No, no, that, I, you said sit not in that.
You said get, would new board members come in?
And because you're talking about the Special Education Director, the third one.
No kidding, I know what we're talking about.
Do we not deserve to insult each one another? When I first started on this board, it was like, and for lack of a better word, assumed. I do not want anything to go, I'm not going to be here, I know that, but I don't want anything to go back to that. I don't let people in the public, I don't let people in the public insult my fellow board members, nor do I want board members.
Public forum is over.
So, let's go. I don't need public, I don't need public forum for my self to speak. Moving on.
So, I have to resolve that motion to adjourn to the session with motion being added Personnel F and Administrator B.
Moving on. Approval minutes of the meeting held on October 16, 2019, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Financial. Except Treasuries Report, including Tax Collections for October 2019 and Preliminary Financial Statements as presented.
Standby.
That's okay.
General, I've shown that beginning balance for the month of October, we started with $6,67,176.64. We received $9,264,693.07 and we dispersed during the month of October Our new balance at the end of October is $11,775,502.63.
Thank you, do I have a motion to accept the report?
Standby.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant permission to pay the following bills and payroll for November 2019. Bills, utilities, insurance, and contractual obligations paid at the end of the previous month in the amount of $2,431,297.07.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Current month's general fund bill in the amount of $1,480,691.16.
Standby.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Except Activity Accounts Report as presented by Building Principals.
Standby.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Correspondence.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the individuals that grant receipt on the Albergue Elementary School District Board of Directors. And I would also like to thank Mr. Ed Colbank, Mr. Paul Martin, and Mrs. Janet Swain for their dedicated years of service to the Albergue Elementary School District, its students, and its communities. So, once again, thank you to the three of you. I'd also like to take the opportunity to congratulate and welcome our re-elected and new board members, those being Mr. Dave Howard, Mrs. Charity Krupma, Mr. Bob Mangold, who I believe is in the audience tonight. Bob, are you here? Okay? And Mr. Carl Blinsky, who I believe is also in the audience. I look forward to working with each and every one of you and I understand and appreciate the dedication you have in the district, the time it takes helping keep the district in the right direction. So, thanks again to all of you. And Mr. Beruski, I think you want to say something?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. I just wanted to say a few words about Mr. Colbank, Mrs. Swain, and Mr. Dunham, their level of dedication and service to this board and the school district knowing the bare of our values. It's been honored to serve on this board, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I think.
Moving on to the Treasuries Report.
I'm not reporting that in reference.
Curriculum and Instruction. Grant approval to modify the school calendar to change the one-hour dismissal to a half-day early dismissal for students on Wednesday, November 27, 2019.
Standby.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Personnel. Accept the retirement of Sherri Dugan, Cafeteria Employee, effective November 8, 2019.
Standby.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Dugan for the 32 years of service as a cafeteria employee and all the wonderful bills she served. She was more than a cafeteria employee. She was a mom to a lot of our students at the school she worked in. The special place in my heart for her as well as all cafeteria ladies because my mom happened to be one of retired in this district. So, thank you, Mrs. Dugan.
Award the following elementary and middle school head teacher positions according to contract, and I'm going to do this with my group. Tiffany Dugan, AG North Middle, Duncan, I'm sorry. AG North Middle School, Shay Kleiner, AG South Middle School, Stacy P. Tontani, AL Wilson, Jennifer Hartman, Friendship Hill, Heather Hartley, Masontown, Teresa Wadsworth, George J. Claba, Toby Maykew, Smithfield.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Award Joanne Barker the Middle School Fall Athletic Director Position at Prorated Pay grade.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, and I'm not opposing it with anything to do with respect to the individual, but I don't believe that we should be paying for athletic directors at the middle school level when we have elementary schools that have roles instead of disrepair.
I believe there's a motion to carry.
This is only for the fall when it's already been done, correct?
Yes.
That's what I understand in the job that the member is paying for what has already been done. You stepped in capital for a while, we paid up.
It's appropriate, it's appropriate.
We actually didn't have one in the fall, correct?
Yeah, we created a position earlier and he did do the job that's why it's appropriated, with just a portion of the time of the service.
You say earlier, but that was the last one standing.
I believe so, yes.
I, motion carries. Grant Lisa Hott, Elementary Principal, in leave of absence beginning October 21, 2019 through February 4, 2020.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant Bruce Posner, Classroom Aid, a paid and unpaid leave of absence beginning October 21, 2019 through November 30, 2019.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant Julie Bell, Elementary Instructor, an intermittent FMLA retroactive to October 18, 2019.
Standby.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Grant Kristen Martin, a leave of absence from December 4, 2019 to December 20, 2019.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Accept the retirement of Joetta Britvich, Special Education Director, effective November 8, 2019.
Standby.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to also take this time to thank Mrs. Britvich for her 15 years of service in the Albergue Elementary School District as an administrator, principal of the high school, Albergue South, Special Ed Director. She has a total of 41 years of service in public education. So, thank you, Mrs. Britvich.
Accept the retirement of Joyce Ramsey, Elementary Instructor, effective December 31, 2019.
Standby.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Ramsey as well for her 21 years of dedicated service to the Albergue Elementary School District students. Thank you, Mrs. Ramsey, hope you have a long, healthy, happy retirement.
Moving on. Award Joanne Barker the Middle School Winter and Spring Athletic Director Position according to contract.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed. I believe I'm subbing to it.
Okay, it's not the person I thought would be in favor, Mr. Harley, so that Mr. Dugan could go back to his Athletic Director position.
Award Betty Sanya, the six-and-a-half-hour cafeteria position at George J. Claba Elementary, according to contract.
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hire Jennifer Reese as Middle School Assistant Softball Coach for the 2019-2020 school year.
Question, is this a paid position?
Yes.
All those in favor, we have a motion?
Standby. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Substituted. Uh, M. Hire Jared Plisco to the position of Special Education Director pursuant to the Administrative Compensation Plan effective November 19. Yes. I've done, did you?
She didn't, the secretary, the secretary. Or squirted it. Was it seven two?
It was Carla and I. Motion carries. Administrator. Grant permission to add the following substitutes pending receipt of all proper documents. Nonprofessional Caitlin Dodson, Raymond Drake, Stephanie Garrison.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Professional Kimberly Little, Hillary Cunningham, Christina Smith, Jasmine Packruck. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the revised emergency operation plan for the emergencies and disasters resolution number 1207-2019.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG South cafeteria and gym to AG middle school football boosters on December 13th, 2019, from 4:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for a dance, the contact person being Sabrina Decks.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG High School wrestling room to AG youth wrestling for November 4th, 2019 through March 13th, 2020, from 5:45 p.m. to 7:45 p.m. for wrestling practice, contact person being Tim Kelly.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG High School gym to AG youth wrestling on January 11th, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for wrestling match, contact person being Tim Kelly.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request approval to allow Tanny Kismarsky and Brooke Patterson to attend the Wilson Reading Series introductory course at...
Monshaw.
Monshaw, PA, in March 2020, and cost not to exceed $3,000, paid using Title I and SSIP IDDA grant funds.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I believe before we adjourn, Mr. Kolback, can I...
I'm G.
Oh, oh, Lee, can you read that?
Somebody's gonna have to help you.
Yeah, because they said something.
The motion is to direct administration to solicit candidates from corporate manufacturers and corporate consultants to give proposals to the board at December fourth session meeting to discuss the possibilities for replacing the role that's been voted.
Do you need a motion?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we adjourn, Mr. Kolback, we'd like to address the...
This is a, my remark to everybody, I've had 20 years on a school board here, 18 years at Tech, and one of the best kept secrets at Tech is people have never been there, and should visit it. Albert Galton sends the most people to Tech, and most of the boys and young guys who graduate from CTI make salaries just as important as the first year out of college. And here's my remark to you as being your board member, and I'll take a few minutes because a lot of thought went into it. My entire career was spent working in the Albert Galton School District versus a student, and a teacher, and a coach, and a principal. My wife Betty Ann and I chose to stay in the Albert Galton School District, because we believe that is an excellent place to raise and educate your children. Both of our children and our four grandchildren attended Albert Galton and graduated from Albert Galton. Those four are in college now. I also have a granddaughter that is in the junior high. My wife and I are also Albert Galton graduates, and we're very proud of Albert Galton, and Albert Galton's family are directly examples of how far you can go in education. As a board member, I've always pushed for a full, open door policy when it comes to how we communicate with the parents and public. I do not believe in backdoor politics in public system, and will never condone it. I also believe that the government should not have full control of our schools. The parents, the students, the community, the administrators, teachers know what is best for our local schools. These are people who should make a decision when it comes to the best practice in our education system. During my tenure on the Albert Galton School Board, I've helped oversee the complete remodelling of several schools, as well as construction of two complete schools. This helps to ensure a safe, pleasant learning experience for all students in the district. We have also overhauled the entire technical instruction for the district so that students have a state-of-the-art learning experience in parents and easy access to children's grades and lessons. Teachers have been trained on these new systems, and programs are fully encouraged to use technology in the classrooms. We have the best teachers in the system, you know that, they support you, support them. I have been a teacher, my son is a teacher, my other son is an administrator at Still Valley. We are very proud of education, and thank you for letting me serve for 20 years.
My problem with him, elegant as he is, because he was a teacher and I'm not, my husband and I, where are all the years going to be? When we first started out, who would have thought we'd be here 24 years later? When I was first elected to the board, all of our buildings were in pretty deplorable condition. The elementaries, at that time, because there had already been renovation plans started, they were getting a facelift, with the exception of AL Wilson and Mason Town. Mason Town was probably, at that time, the board realized it was too far gone, and it was going to have to be something done as far as building a new building. The high school, when my husband and I visited it, we hadn't been there probably in the building since we graduated, and we were just shocked by the condition that it was in, along with North Middle School. South Middle School wasn't quite as bad, but we, the board realized, however, that it needed shared work also. We as a board knew that there was a lot of decisions to be made and work to be done, so that is just what we did. We remodeled the high school, we built a new gymnasium, so our students would no longer have to graduate at the State Theater in Uniontown, Pennsylvania, they would be able to graduate right here on their school property. North and South Middle School were also renovated, and with the time, as the time went on, we knew then that we had to do something with Mason Town. There were teachers in classrooms at that point with literally tarts in their rooms, and we knew something had to be done there, so we took care of that. And at that time, AL Wilson was still in okay condition, we didn't do anything to it right away. All we did was, we took care of our wall in front of it, we had the outside painted, and what bothered me most, and it was a little bit of a personal decision, my daughter attended that school, and everyone else, all the other elementaries that had their libraries updated, the technology, which would be outdated now, and I actually told Dr. Martin over there, because she was our superintendent at that time, and I got the board to look at it, and they did get their library. And then, of course, that went on for some years, they were still in that school, and as Mr. Kolback stated, we can go to a new school there. But it has been a journey for me, and I have given more, so much of myself to Albert Galton because I care about it and I am passionate about it. I can't leave, I can't leave tonight without recognizing some of my former board members. And the first one would be Mr. Edward Andrea. Mr. Kolback, many times I've remembered, and he was the godfather of our board, because the man knew everything inside and out. So I thank, I thank this man that I was able to serve again. The next person is Mr. Poochborn, and one of his sons are here right now. There is, there will probably never be another board member felt more passionate about Albert Galton than Poochborn, and I feel grateful that I was able to serve with him too. Mr. Driskowski, which a lot of you probably know him, who was a teacher in this building, awesome man. It was, it was an honor to be with him too. There was Mr. Kenny Plisco, Mr. Joe Canick, and one of Mr. Poochborn's sons, Bill Boy. I know there have been more, but these are the ones that I can just, they just touched me with being able to serve with them, because they were all men who cared, cared about this district, and who wanted to do the right things for our students. There were, in some of our work sessions, there were some very heated discussions, there were a lot of arguments, but what I can say is, we always came to a decision that we thought was best for our students. I've worked with great administrators also. Dr. Denise Martin, what a lady. There's probably no words that I could really express how I feel about her, because I feel she really started the beginning of bringing this district up and out of what it was stuck in. There was Mr. Andy Uzalowski, who watched over our finances like a hawk. He knew everything inside and out. And to the late Mrs. Marlene Duriga, she took care of our federal funds like nobody else's business. She cared. I mention these three because they were just an awesome trio together, and I truly believe that Albert Galton wouldn't be where it is today without them. I have also worked with many other administrators that totally cared about AG. Mr. Walter Vincentelli, Mr. Carl Beza, Candy Jordan, Larry Beza, Mrs. Tracy, Mr. Hutchison, and Mr. Vivian Deitch. Now, this next person, I sometimes feel awful that I, I'm part of Dragon Minus, Mr. Pitt. I believe that it's been almost two years that you've been with us as the Albert Galton superintendent, and you have had everything thrown at you except the kitchen sink. But you have handled everything beautifully and with much intensity. Thank you for working hard and caring so much about Albert Galton. With us, Diane. You have been retired for a little while now, but I want to thank you for always taking care of my questions and my requests. Kathy, you took over for her, and you're doing a great job. Thank you. To the staff of the administrators at the office, I want to thank all of you for your hard work. To the secretaries, the janitorial staff, the cafeteria staff, I want to thank you for everything that you do to keep our buildings going. To the professional staff, without the teachers, there would be no Albert Galton. And I want to thank you for each and every day showing up to work and doing what you do for each and every one of our students. To all the principals, you have a large basket in hand. Thank you for taking care of all of our students and each and every one of our employees. To my fellow board members that are staying here, I wish you all well, and I will be watching to see what happens in the next days of Albert Galton. Now, last but not least, I want to thank my family. My sisters, Jill and Lana, they were a huge sounding board for me, because there were many nights when I went home, and I didn't get much sleep because of a decision that I thought that I maybe shouldn't make, didn't make. Did I make the right one? Did I make the wrong one? Then there is, to my immediate family, to my husband, which really, all those years ago, he was the one who was supposed to be in this position, not me. I want to thank you for all your patience and for listening to me at all times of the night, no matter what, I thank you for that. To my daughter Kaylee, I always said that when I was on the school board, that you were the one who had to live on my decisions. I didn't realize that it would follow you into adulthood, and this, I am sincerely sorry at times, but as you know, I never keep quiet, so just thanks for being here. And I think the last thing I want to say, at the last meeting I talked about, when I spoke on Cyber Hall, I really want each and every one of us to think about, as parents, as grandparents, when you're on Facebook, to think about what you're going to write, and if it's going to be an angry comment, if you were in front of that person, would you be able to say that? Would you be able to do that? I think it's very important, because it's not only, we want to set an example for our students. And what better way to do that? Just be kind to one another. Be kind to one another. Think about how it's going to affect the person when they're, even if they, if they're not on Facebook, or whatever type of other social media, how they're going to feel. I have loved Albert, I have loved Albert Galton, I've loved every minute of it, I would do it all over again. But I will leave you with this, just remember, do unto others as you would have others do unto you. And I think it will be a kinder and a better Albert Galton. And one last thing, I'm going, my husband and I, I don't know if any of you know this or not, but I'm going to say it right now, we are going to be grandparents, and in five years, we will have a student in the Albert Galton School District. Thank you.
If I may ask, I'm calling, if it's dark, if it's been 20 years, how about...
I did 24.
24. It wasn't good math. But listen, the last four years, it's been quite an experience, setting all the meetings, the interviews, it's, it's quite experience. I wish all the new board members elected, all the lucky world, all of the board members, Mr. Price, Matthew Administration. It's been quite a lot, but thanks for everything.
Thank you for all your good advice. Yes. Okay, adjourned. The next record meeting will be held on December 4th, 2019, immediately following reorganization meeting, before 20th of March, through small cafeteria. The work session will also be held that night, if you would agree. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So move.